Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
We want to especially welcome our guests tonight and thank them for being with us. We'll hear more from them in a few minutes and get a proper introduction, but we're delighted to have them with us. Along with our press and our department head, Mike Johnson is with us tonight. And I just think this distinguished attorney and city clerk over in the corner over here, we're so proud of them also. Before we get into our meeting tonight, I'd like to pause for an invitation and a pledge of allegiance. We'll stand together, please. Father in heaven, we thank you that we've had such a beautiful day to enjoy today. We thank you for your many blessings on our community and our state, our area. Lord, we ask you to be in this meeting tonight. The business conducted will be pleasing in your sight. Be with our leaders of our nation tonight and help them to make the decisions that's right for our country. Always let them be guided by your hand. I pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me see it. Item one on our agenda tonight would be our recommendation to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2021 city council meeting. We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Ross made the motion. We need a second. Matt made the second. Those in favor? Thank you. We also have minutes to approve from a special call meeting that was held on March 24th, 2021 to discuss the upcoming sale of the Seitel building. And we need a motion and second to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Matt made a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Scott Robinson made the second. Those in favor approve those minutes. Thank you. Item three on our agenda tonight has to do with the approval of paying our accounts payable bills for March 2021. And we also need a motion for that matter.
I'll make a motion.
Ross made a motion to pay our bills. We need a second.
I'll second.
Scott Robinson made the second. Those in favor taking care of our bills to two. Thank you. On the item four is a... We're going to adopt a resolution tonight that we do annually declaring April as a fair housing month in the city of Hamilton. And that would be Resolution 2021-4-5. And we'll be making a declaration of April as our fair housing month in the city of Hamilton. And we need a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make my.
Matt made a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Wade made the second. Those in favor of adopting that resolution? Thank you. At this time, we're going to pause and we're going to welcome our distinguished guests tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Robert Krim, our hospital administration, to stand and introduce our very special guest that's come to be with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and it's an honor to be here with my colleague, Dr. Jennifer Blanchard, tonight. I'll do a little bit of a formal, a little bit of an informal introduction. Dr. Blanchard is the chief medical officer of North Mississippi Health Services and has a wide breadth of experience working as a chief medical officer in two rural healthcare systems in Washington State and in Montana. Most recently, before joining North Mississippi Health Services, he was the head of player and family wellness for the startup football league, the Alliance of American Football. His experience also includes the chief medical officer and senior vice president of innovation for Language of Care in a cultural transformation group serving healthcare systems and individual physician practices across the country. He also served as the U.S. Army Medical Corps for 11 years. Dr. Blanchard is an internist, an intensivist, which is an intensive care physician. For those of us who don't come from the medical world, he did that both in the state of Washington and in the U.S. Army. Completed his undergraduate studies at the University of Montana and then his medical studies at the University of Mexico.
New Mexico. I thought you said Mexico. I just wanted to make sure.
I did say New Mexico.
You probably did. I'm sorry for interrupting Rob.
That's okay. He completed his internship and residency in internal medicine at Madigan Army Medical Center and his fellowship in critical care medicine at Walter Reed Army Medical Center. Has a master's degree in medical management from the University of Southern Cal's Marshall School of Business. And he is a certified physician executive. If my memory serves me correctly, Dr. Blanchard joined us late in 2019, which we refer to as just prior to COVID. And Dr. Blanchard's experience and education to do this job has proven to be significantly remarkable, both as a physician and a physician executive. And those two things are remarkably different. But he's able to navigate across those very well and he's added tremendous value to North Mississippi Health Services by being able to do so. We may remember this here, I sure do, but the COVID pandemic hit Hamilton and hit our nursing home very early. Early for everyone, I think, across the state and certainly early in the experience of North Mississippi Health Services. And I remember, as we were kind of finding our way through and having a discussion with the CEO of North Mississippi Health Services, Shane Spies. And he was calling to maybe offer condolences, but certainly offer support to the system. And I will never forget how he ended the conversation. He said, "Robert, is there anything we can do for you?" And I said, "Yes, be sure you keep Dr. Blanchard healthy." So fortunately, through the pandemic that we've dealt with, we feel like we've been able to do that and that's been a tremendous blessing. And so I have found Dr. Blanchard to be the ultimate servant leader. And he's been of tremendous value, not only to the system, those specialists in Hamilton, providing the resources and the wealth of knowledge that he has. And I'm happy to introduce him to you tonight.
We love to be here with Dr.
Well, thanks. Well, thank you for having me. Robert, I'm so sorry about interrupting you. I just wanted to make sure that my background was clear in that regard. So when you went, my introduction doesn't introduce you to as really who I am, right? I mean, those are all names, degrees, those kinds of things. That's not who I am. Who I am is, you know, a Montana boy. First one ever to graduate from college, my family. When I came to Mississippi and Alabama, people would say, "Well, we're rural." I'd say, "Well, you know, let's talk about rural." So my great uncle, Earl, ran Moonshine. My great aunt Mary Ann's daughter was a prostitute. My great aunt Carrie's was raised in a shoebox in a bread warmer, in a stove. My great grandfather was a trapper. So that doesn't mean I understand you because everybody's unique and every relationship is unique. But what it does mean is I appreciate being part of a rural system. I appreciate being part of Hamilton and part of Pontotok and part of Ayuka and Tupelo because relationships matter. My handshake matters. What I say matters. You're going to judge me by how I carry myself, how I treat others, how I listen. And so I do feel really honored to be here tonight. And also, what you see is what you get. So I don't have any ability to be asked. That DNA didn't come in my family genes. So I'm open to any question too, but I may not know the answer. I actually bought shirts for three of us that said, "I don't know, really. I don't know." But I'm happy to give you my opinion because if one thing COVID has done is put physicians and all other healthcare players in place where we didn't know what to do other than to care and to do what we were best at. And sometimes we even made mistakes. So, and we will make more mistakes. But together as a team, really can make a difference. The other thing about COVID that's unique, I think, is it's the first disease that, in my experience, and you know, I've been, I graduated from medical school in 1991. I was part of H1N1. You know, I've deployed to Haiti. I mean, I've done a lot of different things in my background, but I've never been in a place where a disease affected your clinical, your spiritual, your emotional, your financial, and your community well-being across the whole world. And so as we go through tonight, I want to honor that a little bit, answer some questions, share some of my thoughts, and sort of finish with my belief in our relationship. So do you mind advancing for me, Robert, if you don't mind? This, oh, before we go, this is actually, one of the things we did is in the middle of COVID and the pandemic, one of the things I really felt was important was for us to recognize everybody. So, you know, everybody who's involved, families, patients, nurses, people that are at direct care, people who aren't at direct care. We gave, we had furloughs. We all took pay cuts. Robert took a pay cut. I took a pay cut. You know, everybody was affected by COVID. And one of my great friends and colleagues, when I first came to Mississippi, was on the executive team. He died very shortly into this from COVID. And so we really felt like we had recognized the team. And so this is a COVID plaque that we gave to the Hamilton in the middle of COVID for their response, for their resilience, for their honor and the dignity. Because when the nursing home was hit, it was devastating to everybody. It was devastating to the patients, the families. But when you're taking care of nursing home patients, they are your families. And it was really, really tough on those caregivers. Next, please. This is, you'll recognize this out in front of your hospital. Next, please. What this is, is this is an accumulative graph of all admissions. So I would be asked many times by reporters, you know, "Well, how many patients do we have in Hamilton? How many patients do we have in Tupelo?" And we, very interestingly, never dealt with this as seven individual institutions. You know, we dealt with this as one system. So we developed a model called a contraction-expansion model. And I'll talk about it a little bit more. But to introduce that, it allowed us to admit from any emergency department across the whole system to any inpatient bed across the whole system. And so we had this patient logistics center, and we still do, that allowed us to negotiate that. That's key because Hamilton may not have any cases where Tupelo may be overrun. Or Tupelo may be overrun and Hamilton may not have any cases. And that allowed us to put patients and get a same level of care. And we'll talk about that in a minute too. And still keep them as close to home as we could because that's my goal. My goal is, is patients do better when they're in the community that loves them. And I really think that's an important part of that care. And so what you can see as we went through this, we went, this is in July 23rd. We had seven to five patients. We thought, wow, in our system, you know, that was really busy for us. And then went along and January 8th, it was up to 118. Next, please. So this just gives you a status of today. So today, I just populated this. We have 10 patients in our system. This was January 8th, 118. And then the number of ED patients, can you see okay, dude? I respond to pain really well.
Yeah, no.
Okay. So number of ED patients boarding, we have zero. But at one point, we had 24 in the Tupelo ED with 14 incoming. And I'll talk about why that is in a minute. In the community hospitals at that same day, this was January 5th, we had three patients in their ED. And then this morning, or yesterday, we had 135 patients that were seen in our six community hospitals in the emergency departments. 26 of those were COVID-related, suspicious for or positive. 72 was the max we had seen. We have five employees or providers that are out right now with COVID suspicious or positive. We had over 400 at one point. Next, please. So I know you can't read all this and it wasn't meant to do that. But I really wanted to show you was sort of the volume of the high-level changes that we had to make as we went through this. Very early on, as Robert said, I came December 9th, 2019. Dick White, who was the CMO at the time, he left January 15th. And we began safety huddles the next week. So because of my background with the military, we did modeling on how would we handle this contraction-expansion model. So we looked at how many nurses do we have? And if we did this model, how many ventilators do we have? How many gloves do we have? How many masks do we have? Did anybody see a North Mississippi healthcare person ever in a bandana as a mask? No. And the reason why is because of how aggressively we managed our supply chain and how much communities responded to us too. So as you go along, these green ones were really things I wanted to point out. On the 14th of March, we had our first patient admitted to Tupelo. And that was the first patient in the system admitted. And actually, they were admitted on the 11th, but their presentation was very atypical. So no one knew they had COVID at that time. They were admitted in Amory. But on the 14th, they were suspected and they were tested positive when they were transferred to Tupelo. On the 10th of November, we had our cyberterrorism. I don't know if you guys know this, but all healthcare was attacked in cyberterrorism from Russia. And hundreds of hospitals crushed under that. Their whole medical records exposed. We didn't. We had an excellent cyberterrorism team. Interestingly, that team working intimately together all got COVID at one point too because of their, you know, working 72 hours in a row, sleeping in that area, managing that, and dropping their guard. 14th of December, the Mississippi Department of Health implemented the Mississippi System of Care Plan. That was huge for us because what that was in not a negative way, but not in a positive way either. What that was, was they said, they had a patient that was in a small hospital, not in Mississippi, but that who died because they couldn't find a bed to transfer him to. So this plan said that if you have, that if you offer this service, like in Tupelo, if we offer neurosurgery, even if we don't have a bed, even if we don't have a nurse, we have to accept a patient transfer to us by this care plan. That's why we had 24 in our ED. We expanded our ICU 110%. So we never, except for the very first week, ever had an ICU patient in Tupelo's ICU that was COVID-positive. We actually turned whole floors into ICUs through negative pressure ducting. So, and then December 17th began our vaccinations. And then January 8th was when I referred to the number of patients, 118 at that time. That was a really big time for me as a leader in a very hard way. We had to begin to consider, what would we do if we no longer had a ventilator? We had a point where we had one stretcher left in our ED to manage patients. And it's hard stuff. But so we had developed actually an ethics team that I had started in March. Not the ethics team, but reined to them, what would happen if we didn't have a piece of equipment or a person to care for a patient? How are we going to address that? And we developed crisis standards of care. Some of those included, you know, early on, when someone's heart stops, you know, you see it on TV. You do chest compressions. You put in a breathing tube, right? In that order. But the problem is, if you're doing chest compressions on a COVID patient or a patient who don't know if they're COVID and you don't have their airway controlled, they're contaminating everybody. And if you remember COVID initially, we didn't know what protected you. So we actually changed that order that you couldn't do chest compressions initially in a COVID-specific patient until you put in breathing tube or had their airway controlled. But we had to make those kinds of decisions, as did every hospital across the US. But very tough stuff. We had to make decisions of, how would you handle more patients when patients died? But we never had to go to crisis standard of care, thank God. But we developed a plan in case we had to because transfers are prepared by and would best serve. Next, please. So this is just to represent, you know, who we are in our Mississippi Health Services. We have seven hospitals, 43 clinics, two residencies now. Our internal medicine residency starts very shortly here. That'll be helpful to you guys as being in Hamilton as well as all the rest of our system because it will populate doctors within our system. We also have a family medicine residency. We have a pharmacy residency, an EP fellowship, and a nurse practitioner fellowship. We have about 7,000 employees. You can see in 812,000 outpatient visits. We actually went from 500 telehealth, helping with this, Robert, 500 telehealth visits a month. Is that a month? Anyway, we went up to 10,000 over that period of time in about a month with our telehealth visits. So that's really been a part of what we've done. We've increased our monitor support and we'll talk about that in a sec. Next slide, please. So this just really shows that hub spoke. But you can see those arrows going in between everything. That's because it isn't about populating Tupelo. It's about keeping patients in the right level of care in the hospitals that are in their neighborhood. So their families can be close, so they, you know, people that they live with in the community can take care of them. And so we really made an effort to do that. We actually developed algorithmic approaches that were spread across the whole system so that, you know, everybody got the same level of care, the same medications, the same oxygen management, the same transfer criteria. We put high-flow oxygen in all the community hospitals to help manage patients more easily with that. Next, please. But we really had to develop this thing called systemness. It's not even really a word, but for us, it's real. And that was the contraction-expansion model. I shared what that was. Consistency of care, that algorithmic approach. We updated that multiple times. We created COVID teams at every single hospital. So Dr. Merschman, Robert, and Jennifer Brewer are on my COVID team in Hamilton. I have one at every hospital. And we have common COVID presentations because we had to have a communication plan that allowed for dialogue, internal, external communication. Sort of what I call covert and overcommunication, meaning there are times, you know, we don't have to blatantly tell people, hey, you have to do this, but we can share information and people will feel more comfortable and naturally move in that direction. We did, started this thing called a fireside chat, which is really opportunities for people to be able to have chat questions about vaccination and other topics like that. We've done resilience. We've done chronic COVID because it turns out that there's chronic disease associated with COVID as well. There's disease in pediatrics as well. So we've done along that. Created a newsletter that at times I was sending every day. Now I send like once a week out to the physicians. We have over 1,000 medical staff that I work with. And then we wanted to make sure our quality stayed there too. So we developed infection control approaches. How you put on a mask, how you take off a mask, how you put on gloves, how you take off gloves. Seems really simple, but if you're worried about contaminating others or yourself, it makes a big difference. And this was really fertile ground. And we've taken some of those lessons and we've learned from them and we've continued some of those in our approaches. And an example would be, one of the things we learned about is we began to look at the admissions and the transfers at Hamilton. And so four of the doctors in Hamilton have actually volunteered to be on a committee with myself and Jennifer Brewer and our organizational performance to look at what do we need to do to be able to keep more patients in Hamilton so they can be near their family. And so that committee has actually had a couple of meetings where we developed a dashboard and where the active process of looking at every case, especially ones that are transferred to Tupelo and only stay two to three days. So we're really looking at how we can try to keep our patients here when appropriate and when to transfer them when appropriate. Next, please. So this is that COVID plaque again, but I wanted to show you this. This, you know, looks like just a bunch of words, but every one of those words, so on July 23rd was one of those bumps, remember? 75 patients. And on July 22nd, the team was pretty beat up. And I had started safety huddles with COVID across the system. And I just, every now and then, I would do different kinds of things to either, you know, I'd say a prayer. I would share, I don't know if you guys know Theodore Roosevelt, the man in the arena? If you've ever read that, if you haven't, I would read that. But it talks about, you know, you really don't know what it's like till you're in the middle of a fight and you're the one bleeding. And really, that's where we were. And so I asked them, just please share one word of how you feel today. So this is January 22nd. We're getting overrun. We're responding to it. And they're sharing words like versatility, tenacity. So I stopped and I said, "Well, you can say negative words." And then they came up with compassion, communicative, empathy, selfless, adaptability, perseverance, diligent, fearless, analytical, transparency. I mean, it was amazing. It was just an amazing moment. You remember that, Robert?
I do.
It was such an amazing moment. Next, please. So I wanted to take you through a few pictures. So I'm going to start, stop talking. And Robert, just count to five and then click the next one until we get to a word one, please. It was very humbling. Still is. 505 deaths as of today from COVID in our system. Coworkers' deaths, family deaths, furloughing of team members, cuts in pay, challenges with third-party payers not wanting to reimburse us or saying we're falsifying, not us specifically, but across the nation, records. You know, I've done incredible scrutiny on those. Every time we code for a COVID patient, it is based on a doctor and a nurse saying this patient has an illness that we feel is secondary to COVID. Inability to implement desired approaches. Initially, I wanted to go with universal masking. We just didn't have the mask to do it. We just couldn't do it. We were gonna be without masks if we did that. And then, you know, we built those supplies and we went forward, but every time we stopped and we listened. And I just wanted to share my prayers as a critical care doc, you know, I, you, you really don't know what, what as, well, I didn't really know what tough was until people died in my arms. And I specifically had a, where this prayer came from, is that 12-year-old little boy. I'm an adult intensivist, but I'm internal medicine, but worked in a surgical ICU, had CT surgery, neurosurgery. Actually went to number one in the nation at one point. And we had a 12-year-old little boy, he was on motor cross track on his motorcycle, went over, he was, he was the best in his, in the state. Landed, the handlebars caught him right below his ribs. And when you're young, your liver's below your ribs. And it fractured his liver. They brought him, they took him straight to the OR, they opened him, they tried to pack his liver. They had two surgeons, two anesthesiologists, he was bleeding out. They couldn't, they couldn't get the bleed stopped, so they packed him back up to put pressure on. And they brought him to the ICU and they said, Jeremy, can you put in a central line, which is a big IV in the neck? I just couldn't get it. His mom was in the room, his dad was in the room and I couldn't get it. Sorry, it still gets me, but I went into the next room and after he died and I had pronounced him and I just lost it. Cause my daughter was 11, my other daughter was 13 and this was somebody's little boy. I remember March came and she's this older nurse, we all know one, right, Robert? She put her hand on my back, she said, Jeremy, I love you to death, but you gotta suck it up. You got 19 other patients you gotta take care of. Well, our COVID nurses and doctors did that every day, every hour. It was, it was like that kind of level. And so this is the prayer that I, that I live with in my own faith, that I, I share with humans. Dear Lord, let me be humble so you don't have to humble me. And if I am humble, let me learn from my mistakes so I may share them and avoid others having to feel my pain. Next, please. So hope back to normal? I mean, you hope, but I tell you with the variants, I'm, I'm not positive. Michigan, 22 states, their numbers are going up right now. Michigan's is going up dramatically. I've had conversations with one of their chief medical officers. 70% of that vi, those, those viruses are the, the UK variant. Now vaccines should protect us against all three of the major variants we're hearing about. But if that, that spike protein, which the genomic, is the genomic level that the vaccines have been aimed at, if that changes, a vaccine won't be as, as effective. So masking, social distancing, hand hygiene are still going to be key to this. So, you know, I know that it's the pits, I hate it too, but it is part of who we are and I don't know when it'll be normal. We've given over 23,000 doses in the German and Pfizer vaccine with three adverse reactions requiring medical attention. So, you know, people have tolerated well. And a lot of people got side effects like body aches, headache, things like that. But significant side effects have had three. Next, please. Next. Next. So I think the power is us. Systemness, your invitations to me, my invitation to you, my cell phone number, 662-260-2048. I remember the first day I worked, I gave that out at a manager's meeting and they're like, you're crazy. And I'm like, you know, people are respectful. They call when they need help and your family, so you can call. Thanks. But these are just the next two, these last, those last two are reflections of the community. You can see sponsors, but they just don't reflect all the sponsors. We've had so many communities been great. I know I'm almost at the end of my time, but next, please. I wanted to share the beauty that happens in the world, even the face of all of this. So one of the VPs that works for organizational performance, this is the window of Mimmin's Hospital that they had shuttered while her daughter was giving birth. And then this is a picture through the window of her daughter. And this is what she wrote. She said, "First, first is a window I looked at from 7:00 AM to about 11:00 PM when they opened the blinds for us to see Sweet Nora. The second is looking through the win," by the way, I'm a Pepperd passionate guy, if you haven't figured out. So, but, but I'm tough as all get out, so it's loud. "The second is looking through the window and the last is my precious girl." I didn't include the last one, but what is not seen is the staff that came out to check on us. The doctor was stopped to update us that she was about to start pushing to deliver. She even said to stay close to the window and they would push the bed as close as they could so we could get our first claims. I truly saw God that day, not just in the face of my granddaughter, but in the faces of those who made the day special for us." I want to let you know about Hamilton, about your hospital. So, you know, it looks like, because I wear a suit and I come from Tupelo, maybe I don't get here that often, but I actually come quite a bit and I love Hamilton. And the reason I love Hamilton is because when you walk around Hamilton, relationships matter. People authentically care. People are proud to give care. And when I go to restaurants, people are nice to me. And when I walk down the street, people are nice to me. And it reminds me of home, reminds me of where I'm from, Montana. And we're committed to you. And I just, I just wanted to tell you that I'm really proud of the team that's in Hamilton. And I really believe, like this one committee that I've shared with you, that we're really going to continue to make a difference and, and provide incredible care and keep families and patients where they need to be, near home. Next, please. Lastly, I just wanted to give you the power of thank you. This is from Duke. This was a study that was done in Duke. They took COVID caregivers and they asked them to write a letter to someone who had made a difference for them in COVID. And I do a lot of handwritten letters, I fly fish, so I always do them on fly fishing cards across the whole system. But what they found is they did emotional exhaustion surveys before and after in two different groups. And the groups that sent thank you notes actually were much happier. So as you walk away from today, if you think of somebody in your community, and it doesn't have to be a healthcare worker, that made a difference over this last year, think about writing them a note. A handwritten note. I mean, if a doctor can do it, I mean, they can't read them, but you know, when I do it, but they, they still like getting them. And it, it'll make a difference. And for you too, next, please. So this is the Sipsey Wilderness. This is if you don't watch your trail, you end up going like this and then you end up going like this. But that was a 15-mile hike I did there. I had a archery elk hunt and then a steelhead fish, flyfish, fish. So I go back home and do those, so you gotta stay in shape to do those. That's why I got a little, little limp in my giddyup. I was playing ultimate with 20-year-olds, but anyway. I would answer any questions. I know I, I don't know if I took too long, but I really wanted to give you a feel for what we were.
You didn't take too long, Doctor. Excellent presentation. Robert and I had early conversations when the COVID broke out and I could hear the worry in his voice and he could hear the worry in my voice. And we communicated, but we didn't have answers. We had lots of questions and we've been searching for answers for this community. He was searching for medical answers and, and he was worried about staffing as far as could he hold the staff together to do the work that was ahead of him. He had all these concerns. He shared his heart with me and I shared mine with him. And we were about as passionate as you were tonight in your presentation a few times because we were truly worried and didn't understand the disease firstly. Secondly, we, I'd never faced a pandemic and I hope I never face another one. I think we are seeing some light at the end of the tunnel and that's my hope today. I know there's some new variants of the disease and we're still concerned and we still have a few cases here and there, but it's not as prevalent as we've seen. Counselor, do you have any questions you'd like to ask of Dr. Blanchard?
I appreciate you taking your time coming tonight. I did say I, I learned a lot just from watching, watching you do it. We have good people in Hamilton, thank you for recognizing that. Yeah?
I just wanna say thanks for coming. I think communication between the hospital and the city is very important and just knowing what's going on and going forward and the vision and just wanna say lastly, just appreciate everything y'all doing during this COVID and, you know, with the hospital, the patients and everything. Thank y'all.
I just wanna say, just, here it brought me to yours, to see somebody that is passionate about their job and in a position as you are. And I know how passionate Mr. Trem is about his job. I've known him for a while now and he is a great leader at that hospital and I know you know that and I think both of you guys, I appreciate everything that y'all doing thus far and going forward.
Five of your doctors in Tupelo know me pretty good. Some of them know me on a first-name basis, like know I'm a bass fisherman and things like that. We've gotten pretty personal. Dr. Whitehead and I have been seeing each other for about 10 years. And I've seen Dr. King, Dr. Og, Dr. Ogler, and Dr. Hooen and the list goes on. When you get my age, you're always at the doctor's office. Of course, I use the locals too. We're thankful for our healthcare that we have in Hamilton and we think it's very good. And we know you've got the specialists, if we need specialists, really 40 miles away. And it's really very nice to be able to stay close to home when you have sickness and our families can visit more easily and get to the doctor more easily when we seek our specialist over Tupelo. So it's been a good relationship for us here in Hamilton, having North Mississippi umbrella us under them also.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I will tell you, I don't see us as an umbrella. I'm not correcting, I'm just sharing my thought and I brought this up in the safety huddles many times. I mean, without Hamilton, we would've been weaker. Without Pontotac, we would've been weaker. Without Aiko, West Point, who would've been weaker. We are strongest as a team. And the other thing is, is I really meant it, that this did not just hit hospitals, this hit you guys as a city. And it is quite a burden that you carry as leaders in this city. And I, I don't under-recognize that or under-appreciate that. I have many different conversations with many different people. Many of them informal because I have to be careful about, you know, being, you know, the medical representative when you have a department of health. But I, I seriously am here for you. If you need, you know, need to come do an update, I'll come do an update. You know, you need to talk to me, talk to me. Really, it's what you see is what you got. Cause when I die, you know, they're not gonna call for Dr. Blanchard, so I probably should get over it. So, you know, but on the other hand, I wanna be able to stand proud that I made a difference and listen. That's who we are.
We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Trem, we thank you for being a forefront runner for us and holding us, our community together medically while we were trying to get through this awful crisis.
It's tough stuff.
My hat's off to Robert because he's been brave in all of this and I appreciate it.
I do. Friend of mine used to say, hats off to the past and coats off to the future. We've still got a lot of work to do, so we'll keep working at it.
Sure, thank you. We appreciate you guys and y'all are very welcome to stay. We got a few more things on the agenda that we're gonna.
Zags are playing in the Northwest. Go Zags. I know you guys would understand sports, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Y'all got my number if you need us?
All right.
We'll see you later.
Come back to see us in a ton of Dr. Blanchard.
Thanks, sir. See you later.
Item six on our agenda line is the announcement that Shailene Evans will be hired as our receptionist here at City Hall. And item seven would be a recommendation to pay Shailene a salary of 1340 per hour for her work. And we would need a motion to pay Shailene. Scott Robinson made a motion, we need a second.
I'll second that motion.
A second from Scott Tyreke and all those in favor of paying 1340 for that position. Thank you. Recommendation to allow the Hamilton Elementary School Principal, Ed Smith, to use 8,400 of the funds donated to the school from the alcohol tax collecting to purchase a zero-turn lawnmower that is much needed to elementary campus. He came and asked permission in our last work session to allow him to use those funds. And is there any discussion before we bring this item to a vote tonight?
I would just like to encourage Mr. Smith to shut local. I know that's a question that we didn't ask enough, I'm confident, but, you know, cause it is tax policy or so. Let's try to put it back into that.
Good point. Any, any other, other district? Okay. At this point then, we ask for a motion to bring this to vote.
I like motion.
I like the motion. Oh, it's been a second. We got a motion and a second to allow Mr. Smith to use 8,400 of those funds to purchase what's needed lawn tr, lawnmower. Those in favor? Unrepulsed, okay. Who, who tops with that? Principal Smith, don't know, federal regulations. I'd like to suggest maybe he gets that mower here and that. Will you call it? Okay, good, thank you, Scott. Item nine on the agenda tonight is a recommendation to allow the Park and Recreation Director, Tim Kerr, to proceed with the replacement of lights at the two T-ball fields. I think these accommodate more than T-ball, but little league baseball fields. The lights will be purchased from Musco Sport Lighting LLC and installed by S&amp;G Walrath Electric Incorporated. The total price of this project will be $210,250. One half of the cost from this project, $105,125, will be taken from the capital improvement fund with the other half coming from the city's children fund. Any discussion before we bring this to a motion to vote? If not, this time.
We already discussed it there. The lights are very old and outdated.
They don't qualify as, as lighting for a field right now.
It's expensive, but it's something that they've done again for multiple years.
They'll back to the LED and they're gonna save us money in the long run.
I think the discussions we've had have brought us to the realization that we must do it and do it right. So at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to proceed.
I like that motion, I'll say.
We got a motion and a second from our council to proceed with the vote. Those in favor of replacing those lights? Have a unanimous, thank you, council. I think that's a good move and I think we're doing it correctly. Item 10 is something we may wanna discuss before we vote, but, and we may not vote tonight, but it's just something we wanted to put on the table tonight. A recommendation to allow collection of fees to contractors and rental property owners who bring large amounts of rubbish to the city dumpster at the sanitation department. Fees collected will be $20 for a large trailer load, $10 for a small trailer load and $5 for a pickup load. And this will allow additional people to be able to come to our dumpster and get rid of debris and, and things that they can't otherwise dispose of readily without going to some landfill in the distance. This will help us defray some of the costs of having to pay for that also. So this item's open for discussion or Mike, you may have some information you wanna share with us that'll be kinda under your department heading. If you wanna kind of give us your reasoning for wanting to have a backup on these fees.
I'd be glad to, but I feel pretty ins, you need to, back to the doctor. Presentation and the seriousness of COVID versus somewhere, somebody bringing garbage to you. It is serious to people looking for a place to get rid of unwanted items and stuff. In the past, we haven't charged rental property owners or, or contractors any fee and, and didn't allow any of them to dump in the dumpster. But over a period of time, we, we would let some, they just had item two to throw away, so. And as a matter of fact, we, we asked a couple of contractors what they thought if we did charge and they were more than willing to pay a fee just so they'd have a place, a place to bring stuff to. Marion County doesn't have an inert landfill anywhere. So the closest one to here would be Leon or Russell. They have a, have a inert landfill there. We felt if we, if we charged a small fee, a token fee, I'd say, but we could allow other people that we hadn't allowed dumped there before, construction people and rental property owners, which would actually open it up to more people to find a place to bring your stuff to and possibly get some of the county, out in county all the ways that they could bring stuff to. And, and try to defer some of the costs by charging a small, small fee to it. I'll try to answer any questions that you might have. It's, it's pretty simple, we're not going, at the rates we're charging, it's nowhere near what it's cost us to do that. And, and if it becomes overwhelming, you know, we may have to adjust. But we wanna start out and just see where it goes and if we need to adjust after that, maybe we will. Business owners, most of them have a dumpster, some don't. And, and we allow some to kind of, if they've got a few boxes or something that they need to get rid of, they, they come, potatoes in household, household garbage bags. But, you know.
They don't get charged for going to the dumpster, not the big dumpster, but the garbage dumpster?
No, they do not.
That they, they do not.
Yeah. Again, that's another situation, cause they're, they're on, they have to, they're on commercial garbage, which we don't do. They're paying some other provider, but that hasn't really been a big issue at all, so. Until it does, I think we're fine, just doing it the way that we're doing it.
One argument, Mike, that I've gotten from some of the owners that owns rental properties and have 15, 20, 30, 40 rentals and some may even have more.
Sure.
They're paying all those garbage fees, so they feel like, I'm already paying 40 garbage fees, why do I need to pay more?
Well.
And that's, and I see your point that sometimes they have a large load because they're trying to clean up after somebody left, left a mess in there.
That's right.
No problem.
They're basically.
But they're saying, I've already paid 40 garbage fees this month, so.
That's true, but if you, if you break it down individually, that's $17 per unit, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we pick up, basically that, that's enough to cover their household garbage charges. Okay, so what happens over? There's a big turnover in rental property, as, as well you probably all know. And a lot of times when a person moves out, they pack a suitcase and that's all they've got and they leave the rest of it in there. And then they gotta go, the owner has to go through there and clean it all up. And there may be, you know, they may bring five or six trailer loads down there. Now, on, on a large item pickup, which is basically if somebody's got a refrigerator or a stove, mattress, a swing set, you know, that's basically what the large item pickup is for. We allow two pickups a, a year and after that it's $50 per pickup. So if you kind of relate that to somebody bringing a trailer load, you know, we, we wanna charge $20 for a trailer load, which is half of what two pickups a year would be.
And we still pick up, we still pick up each household twice a year.
For three, three jars. That's right. Brush, and such as that.
Refrigerator, whatever they drag out to the side of the roof.
Right. Yes. Actually, 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 we have a, you know, one day is a cleanup day.
Sure.
So, actually, they get three times, if you, if you count it, three times plus the cleanup day.
So, they get an annual cleanup day and two more.
Yes. That's right. That's right. Now, we did that, we have an annual cleanup day, but we clean up every day.
Right.
We run, we run the raffle truck.
Every day.
And there's you, somebody out in a, in a ton truck picking up large items, so I think it's a good thing. I, I hope to suggest, if you answer any questions, or somebody's got a better idea?
Mike, I'm, Mr. Bill came last. My only thing is just, you know, log the money where it goes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think you'll have any other issues, you know. Just be transparent. I know that y'all already have. Yeah.
You know, honestly, to a lot of people, pay, want to pay with cash. We prefer they pay with a check, you know. We, we, we'll keep up with it and turn it in once a week is how we've been doing it.
What's it, what's your...
It's not going, I mean, you know, it, it, it's five, ten, and twenty, a hundred dollars would be a big week for, you know, we're only open two days, and we may have to, you know, if things keep going, like I say, we may have to go another day, open up another day, and, and...
The dumpster really gets filled up by, our guy's filling it up every, not necessarily somebody bringing something twice a week, because y'all fill it up almost every day by the stuff you pick up, that we're going out just about every day.
We, we, no, no, that's...
Or is it filled up just those two days? It's filled up in those two days?
Yeah, we, it takes, open on Wednesday and Friday, plus what we bring.
Right.
If filled up twice. Yeah.
What, what we have, Bill addressed me on this, Bill Walker, who runs our inert part, and he addressed me on this, and one of my reasons for wanting to get it on the minutes is that we really don't have a fee base on our books as such, and for them to collect money, and, and we don't have an ordinance or something to back them up on our books, I really didn't feel comfortable with it. I'd rather that we sanction what they're doing as a council, and, and then if we decide that we've done it, you know, to where it needs adjusting, I feel like that we still have the right, as a council, and mayor, to come back and listen to them again and, and tweak it if we need to. I'd kind of like to get this handled if we can. If we can't vote on it tonight because of some reason, then I'm okay with it, but pretty soon, if we're going, I, I don't want to collect any more fees till we back them in it, is what I'm saying. I just don't feel good.
We have a lot of people that will come down there, put stuff in there, who have, have been in the past, had to turn away, and it just, you know, it's always a kind of conflict. We, we'd rather charge them just a little bit and say, you're welcome to put it in there, than to have to tell them that we can't, and...
I guess my thing is, if we open this up, and people from all over the county start coming in, are we going to end up taking them, I mean, we won't take them money, but having to take on more garbage and...
Probably so, yeah.
And end up short in the sales in the long run.
We may have to, like I said, we may have to increase the fee and, and maybe add a day or two, another day or so a week to handle it. We don't want to lose, you know, any money, but we're not, I don't think we can ever get to the point. I mean, this is expensive. You know, we spend probably fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year just on that inert dumpster, and, and some, you know, some cases end up staying up a lot, but when your, the budget that we've got, it's a significant amount.
Some of these items just getting really, really hard to get rid of, and if Marion County had an inert landfill, people could take it directly there, but they got to drive a good distance to get rid of this stuff. We're taking in a certain amount of it, just within our corporate limits, and we've got a few people that might be out in the country just out of the limits, need to bring a few things, so.
I don't think that's going to be a fee.
I think it would help accommodate them too. I don't have anything else to add. We can vote on it or we cannot vote on it, so I'll, I'll ask for a motion. If I don't get a motion, we'll table the matter.
I'll make a motion. We, we proceed.
All right. Scott and Tyra, after listening, has made a motion. We proceed. We have a second.
What's your second?
We got a second. Anybody to discuss it before we vote? Vote your, you don't have to vote for it. Vote against it, for it. I'm going to call for a vote, and I'm going to vote for it. Unanimous. Okay. We backing you into collecting the fees, okay?
Thank you.
All right. We've got Adam Levin on our agenda. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. This is a recommendation to establish a Take Pride in Hamilton Anti-Littering Committee to address the growing problem of litter throughout the city of Hamilton. We're going to ask Scott Tyra, our councilman, to explain the purpose and talk to us about the committee.
Well, while we talked in the work session of the day, one thing we all heard when we ran was, what are you going to do about the litter? And some areas of town are okay, some are bad. We've seen pictures, letters been on social media, whatever, and this Anti-Littering Camp Committee, just Take Pride in Hamilton, couple of, some of the points, well, I'd like to see how this committee, that they would help us do, is to address the growing problem of the litter that has become an embarrassment and an eyesore to many of the Hamilton residents, to educate, organize, and enlist the help of residents to become part of the solution, to install pride in our residents, to keep our city clean of debris, and improve its curb appeal to potential businesses that may consider Hamilton as a location, which will bring additional revenue and employment to our area. Also, to, to establish a schedule for cleanup days that will reach all areas of the city, but concentrate on the main roads and streets of our business districts, to identify the resources that can be utilized to accomplish this initial cleanup and ultimately maintain the progress, and also to enlist the help of our police force to be on the lookout for more litter bugs. And hopefully through all this, we'll get different organizations that will want to chip in and help and just take pride in what we got. And this, this committee, all these, these members are, these folks have been contacted, and they're eager and ready to serve, and they all are Heidi Ledbetter, Sheila Ferden, Lynn Holloway, Frankie Kimble, Kathy Page, Ricky Pierce, and Alan West. So, tonight, I'm just, I'm bringing this to, you know, for us to, to vote on, let's put them to work, they're ready to work, and let's back them, and let's take pride in Hamilton.
I got a question. Is the committee full, or can there be additions to the committee?
I'm sure they'll take as many committee members and help as they can get to, to, to make this work. It's going, it's not, we can't do it, this committee can't do it by herself. It's going to take the whole town to, to get behind and, and clean this, clean our streets up.
Would you address the press that's here tonight and, and ask others to join this committee, please?
We've had some, some different organizations that have already reached out, and they're ready to serve and, and help and do whatever they can, so I, I don't see it being a problem. I mean, if they want to add some folks on it all. So, I guess tonight, I guess we bring it as a motion to, to be voted on. Mayor?
And you're making that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Scott Tyra's made the motion after explaining what the cleanup and Take Pride in Hamilton Committee is going to be doing. Scott, do you have any suggestions before we adopt this as a, and go to a vote? Do you have any suggestions for our committee? We've got these ordinances about littering. Will this committee in any way need to stay real close to that particular ordinance as far as enforcement?
I, yes, sir, I think so. We, we still have to follow our ordinances, and I think, you know, the committee having those ordinances to be a guide in the things that Scott mentioned.
Would you say the committee is going to be more an awareness type thing and actually progress, get the work done that needs to be done, is that what you think?
That's what I was thinking, yes, sir.
I, I want them to operate in the boundaries that we don't get ourselves in any kind of situation over trying to do good for our community.
That's right, and I think...
They may want to have you at a meeting and consult with this committee, kind of give them some parameters.
Yes, sir, and I think a lot of the things that Councilman Tyra mentioned are things that just involve the community getting together and, you know, going out and cleaning it up. And then if there's issues that come up, that, like we've had issues, you know, with certain properties that are, are bad, whatever, that they may see that they can recommend to the council to do something with, you know, I think that would be good.
And some of the leading citizens in this community that stopped the mess, that drove the book out of them. If you catch them littering, they might can pay the maximum fine the first time, make some examples out of some people. What about that?
Yeah, that always comes in front of our municipal board, Judge Howell, and she does a great job with that, and that could definitely be the suggestion in court.
We're, we're setting up, right, on a course to do some good here, and I want to stand while I vote for this, and as how strongly I feel about it, and, I mean, people rolling their windows down, throwing their paper out in our streets, it's got old, and I'm, I'm tired of it, fed up with it, and blowing boxes off the back of their trucks as they go down the road, and leaving them laying there, and it's, it's just getting on my nerves. I'm an old man, and you don't, you don't need to get on the player's toes. I mean, I'm really, I'm serious about this business, and Scott Tyra's serious, the rest of us captains are serious, and some of them ran on the premise, we'll help clean up Hamilton, and, and so did I. I mean, it's, we got eyesores all over the place, and we're going to try to get rid of some of them, all of them, if we can. But anyway, we got a motion on the floor. Got a second on the floor. I'm going to stand up while I vote. All those invited to this motion.
That's right.
Yeah, that's how we feel about it.
Thank you, Scott.
I've never felt more strong about a motion than we've made.
This also needs to get them to the properties, not just the litter. You know, we're going to give a list of those properties abandoned.
We're getting to a point in the spring now where the weather's rough, we can, I think we can attack this problem, and we're going to attack it head-on through the help of this committee that's volunteered their services, and as we say, we want to add to this committee. Well, it's been a long night. I appreciate everybody participating tonight and, and having the comments. Our presentation from Mr. Trim and, and Dr. Blanchard couldn't have been better. It really hit my heart. My heart strays. My mother caught the COVID and, and lived through it. She's fast on now, but it wasn't the COVID that got her, but it scared us to death when she tested positive, and we've had five hundred and five deaths attributed to COVID in our region. Folks, that's a lot of people, and that's, this is in a year's time, you might say, and I really, really hope the vaccine is the answer. It seems to be happening. The mask obviously have been a good help to everyone, and I just hope that we can soon say COVID was bad, but we're, we're past it, and that we have some normal times again. Thank you all for coming. At this point, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
We got Matt making the motion, and we, we need a second to that motion.
Second.
Wade Williams, second. All in favor of adjournment? Thank you. Appreciate y'all doing it.